Or we could just dissolve without completing our business and just call it quits. But we have a quorum. Because I, the question was, why didn't, why didn't you tell us that in the first place? And the answer to that was, oh, the first night. Well, we, we kind of have to pass the budget. Okay, we're starting with Article 25, and hopefully we can, I hope we can finish tonight. Okay, so this is a resolution in support of legislation to establish a climate change super fund. The motion is located at page 25, five to 25, six. It's the move by Mr. John Harris, seconded by Mr. Green. Mr. Harris? And Ms. Helms-Daly.
Thank you. John Harris, Precinct Eight, and co-chair of Climate Action Brookline and lead petitioner of Warren Article 25. First of all, bearing a warning, 91 degrees in early June could well be a harbinger of 100-plus degree days in August or September. In a study released in April in the scientific journal Nature, researchers used attribution science to estimate that the extreme heat caused by emissions from just 111 companies worldwide cost an estimated $28 trillion in damage worldwide between 1991 and 2020, a third of which was attributed to just five companies: Saudi Aramco, Gazprom, Chevron, ExxonMobil, and British Petroleum. Those are the kinds of targets of the climate change super fund, not your local gas station or your natural gas utility. A lesson we were all taught as kids: if you make a mess, you clean it up. The principle of "make polluters pay" is now clear precedent in environmental regulation, having been employed in all major U.S. pollution control laws, including the Clean Air Act, the Clean Water Act, and the original Super Fund Act of 1980, which was a major federal program to clean up hazardous chemical waste sites. Because the climate perpetrators are huge multinational corporations, by right, this should be addressed by the federal government, administered like by the Environmental Protection Agency. And so in 2024 and 2025, climate change super fund bills were filed in Washington, D.C. to do just that. The bills have languished, so the "Make Polluters Pay" campaign has refocused its attention on the states. So far, New York and Vermont have passed climate change super fund laws, and the legislatures of California and Minnesota are considering it. In Massachusetts, the campaign asks municipalities to pass resolutions, not home rule petitions. Note: the state campaign believes that resolutions are a powerful enough route to convince the state legislature to pass Senate Bill 588, House 1014, an act establishing a climate change super fund. So far, several cities have passed resolutions. If we pass this tonight, Brookline will be the very first town meeting in Massachusetts to endorse the resolution. If, when the Massachusetts Legislature passes the bill, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs would estimate the costs of climate damage en masse over the last 25 years, would determine proportionate liability of, and then collect cost recovery demands from responsible parties. The revenue generated over the next 25 years would be allocated to projects designed to repair or adapt to past negative impacts of climate change or prepare for future climate change disruption. Forty percent or more would go to benefit environmental justice populations. The projects would encourage nature-based solutions and may include, but are not limited to, installing energy efficiency retrofits, including cooling systems, in public and private buildings, including schools and public housing, upgrading roads, bridges, subways, and transit systems, preventative healthcare programs and medical care to treat illness or injury caused by climate, addressing urban heat island effects through green spaces and urban forestry, and upgrading the electrical grid, including possibly creating clean energy microgrids. The umbrella organization "Make Polluters Pay Massachusetts" is confident that the climate change super fund bill may raise billions of dollars over the next 25 years. Why not aim for the stars? Finally, to quickly address two concerns raised at the advisory committee: this should be dealt with at the federal level by the EPA, we absolutely agree, but that will not happen with the current administration. We could see a near future where several states combine to form a more powerful regional enforcement organization. Vermont and New York are adjacent to Mass., so that would easily be possible. Even better, this could build to a national, that is, federal program, a meaningful EPA in four years; that could be a possibility. Finally, at the advisory committee, there was concern that lower-income people would bear the brunt of any price increases. Climate Action Brookline would be happy to work with anyone interested in creating something like the ideas to make carbon taxes revenue-neutral for people below a certain income level. To conclude, please vote favorable action on Warren Article 27, and here is Susan Helms-Daly.
Thanks. I'm Susan Helms-Daly, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One, and co-petitioner of Article 25. I'm just going to add two quick points to what John said. I'll share some of the supporters of this legislation and make an economic argument for it. Next slide, please. The supporters include, but are not limited to, all of these groups that are well-respected and well-known in the environmental community. And I especially want to call your attention to the cosponsor of this bill at the State House, our very own Tommy Vitolo. Now, the economic argument for this legislation centers around the idea of externalities. Next slide, please. And don't glaze over, this isn't a long economics lecture. What are externalities? Basically, they are the costs of goods that are not reflected in the price of goods. In other words, they're the spillover effects that represent real costs to third parties without their consent. What are the externalities of the fossil fuel industry? Next slide, please. They include climate change, habitat destruction, air pollution, water pollution, including our drinking water, and healthcare costs. All told, these costs add up to over trillions, to trillions of dollars, with a T, every year. You would think that the federal government would look at this travesty and try to claw back some of that money. And yet, we do just the opposite: we subsidize this industry. This legislation would be a critical step in riding that ship. It will not only create funds for mitigation where it's most needed, but it will begin to internalize those external costs and reflect them in the operating costs of the industry that's creating them. By extension, it will make clean energy, which imposes far fewer external costs, more competitive. Thank you for supporting Warren Article 25.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator in Town Meeting. I'm Bernard Green, speaking for unanimous select board. The select board voted five to zero for favorable action on an amended article that did not support Section 2T of the new Chapter 21P of the general laws that would be created by the legislation Warren Article 25 is supporting. That can be found at page 25-5 of your materials. Section 2T adds a provision requiring that iron and steel purchased for products under the legislation must be made in America. This legislation is very important, as John Harris has indicated, in these climate perilous times. It establishes a climate change super fund through a climate change adaption cost recovery program administered by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. The program will be funded by compensatory payments from fossil fuel companies that have been found to be responsible for climate change damage. The legislation imposes strict liability on the responsible parties. Super fund would be used to pay the identified costs of climate change adaptation projects. John already described the important details of this legislation, so I won't bore you with repeating them. Section 2T, however, the proposed legislation, would have imposed significant cost burdens on any Brookline super fund project where, for reasons of cost, availability, or reliability of the manufacturer, a foreign steel manufacturer would be preferred. The higher costs and other factors would reduce the effectiveness of the super fund to address climate change. Another reason for not asking the legislature to include Section 2T is that it is not germane to this legislation, is completely outside the scope of the real intent of the bill, and would undermine its effectiveness. In the great majority of states other than Massachusetts, a provision such as Section 2T would violate constitutional provisions requiring that legislation have just one subject, not two. The purpose of the single-subject rule is to prevent unrelated provisions to be bundled together in one bill to gain support from different groups of legislature. This ensures that each measure are voted based on their merit and ensures that laws are clear, concise, and easy for the public and legislators to understand. We should urge the legislature voluntarily to follow the wisdom of that single-subject rule. The climate change super fund is particularly complex and will result in protracted litigation. New York passed its bill on December 26 of last year, and litigation began on February 6, when a coalition of 22 states and four industry groups filed a lawsuit in federal court alleging the legislation was unconstitutional and preempted by federal law. This is similar to litigation filed against Vermont. Thus, the bill would focus on the importance of the super fund, that should focus on the importance of the super fund. This should focus on the importance of the super fund. This is similar to litigation filed against Vermont. Thus, the bill would focus on the importance of the super fund, that should focus on the importance of the super fund. This is similar to litigation filed against Vermont. Thus, the bill would focus on the importance of the super fund, that should focus on the importance of the super fund. This is similar to litigation filed against Vermont. Thus, the bill would focus on the importance of the super fund, that should focus on the importance of the super fund. This is similar to litigation filed against Vermont. Thus, the bill would focus on the importance of the super fund, that should focus on the importance of the super fund. This is similar to litigation filed against Vermont. Thus, the bill would focus on the importance of the super fund, that should focus on the importance of the super fund. This is similar to litigation filed against Vermont. Thus, the bill would focus on the importance of the super fund, that should focus on the importance of the super fund. This is similar to litigation filed against Vermont. Thus, the bill would focus on the importance of the super fund, that should focus on the importance of the super fund. This is similar to litigation filed against Vermont. Thus, the bill would focus on the importance of the super fund, that should focus on the importance of the super fund. This is similar to litigation filed against Vermont. Thus, the bill would focus on the importance of the super fund, that should focus on the importance of the super fund. This is similar to litigation filed against Vermont. Thus, the bill would focus on the importance of the super fund, that should focus on the importance of the super fund. This is similar to litigation filed against Vermont. Thus, the bill would focus on the importance of the super fund, that should focus on the importance of the super fund. This is similar to litigation filed against Vermont. Thus, the bill would focus on the importance of the super fund, that should focus on the importance of the super fund. This is similar to litigation filed against Vermont. Thus, the bill would focus on the importance of the super fund, that should focus on the importance of the super fund. This is similar to litigation filed against Vermont. Thus, the bill would focus on the importance of the super fund, that should focus on the importance of the super fund. This is similar to litigation filed against Vermont. Thus, the bill would focus on the importance of the super fund, that should focus on the importance of the super fund. This is similar to litigation filed against Vermont. Thus, the bill would focus on the importance of the super fund, that should focus on the importance of the super fund. This is similar to litigation filed against Vermont. Thus, the bill would focus on the importance of the super fund, that should focus on the importance of the super fund. This is similar to litigation filed against Vermont. Thus, the bill would focus on the importance of the super fund, that should focus on the importance of the super fund. This is similar to litigation filed against Vermont. Thus, the bill would focus on the importance of the super fund, that should focus on the importance of the super fund. This the ideas to make carbon taxes revenue-neutral for people below a certain income level. To conclude, please vote favorable action on warrant article twenty-seven, and here is Susan Helms-Daly.
Slide, please. Thanks. I'm Susan Helms-Daly, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One, and co-petitioner of Article twenty-five. I'm just going to add two quick points to what John said. I'll share some of the supporters of this legislation and make an economic argument for it. Next slide, please. The supporters include, but are not limited to, all of these groups that are well-respected and well-known in the environmental community. And I especially want to call your attention to the cosponsor of this bill at the State House, our very own Tommy Vitolo. Now, the economic argument for this legislation centers around the idea of externalities. Next slide, please, and don't glaze over. This isn't a long economics lecture. What are externalities? Basically, they are the costs of goods that are not reflected in the price of goods. In other words, they're the spillover effects that represent real costs to third parties without their consent. What are the externalities of the fossil fuel industry? Next slide, please. They include climate change, habitat destruction, air pollution, water pollution, including our drinking water, and healthcare costs. All told, these costs add up to over trillions, to trillions of dollars, with a T, every year. You would think that the federal government would look at this travesty and try to claw back some of that money. And yet, we do just the opposite. We subsidize this industry. This legislation would be a critical step in riding that ship. It will not only create funds for mitigation where it's most needed, but it will begin to internalize those external costs and reflect them in the operating costs of the industry that creating them. By extension, it will make clean energy, which imposes far fewer external costs, more competitive. Thank you for supporting Warrant Article twenty-five.
Thank you. Mr. Green.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator in Town Meeting. I'm Bernard Green, speaking for a unanimous Select Board. The Select Board voted five to zero for favorable action on an amended article that did not support Section two T of the new Chapter twenty-one P of the general laws that would be created by the legislation Warren Article twenty-five is supporting. That can be found at page twenty-five dash five of your materials. Section two T adds a provision requiring that iron and steel purchased for products under the legislation must be made in America. This legislation is very important, as John Harris has indicated, in these climate perilous times. It establishes a climate change super fund through a climate change adaption cost recovery program administered by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. The program will be funded by compensatory payments from fossil fuel companies that have been found to be responsible for climate change damage. The legislation imposes strict liability on the responsible parties. Super fund would be used to pay the identified costs of climate change adaptation projects. John already described the important details of this legislation, so I won't bore you with repeating them. Section two T, however, the proposed legislation, would have imposed significant cost burdens on any Brookline super fund project where, for reasons of cost, availability, or reliability of the manufacturer, a foreign steel manufacturer would be preferred. The higher costs and other factors would reduce the effectiveness of the super fund to address climate change. Another reason for not asking the legislature to include Section two T is that it is not germane to this legislation. It's completely outside the scope of the real intent of the bill and would undermine its effectiveness. In the great majority of states other than Massachusetts, a provision such as Section two T would violate constitutional provisions requiring that legislation have just one subject, not two. The purpose of the single-subject rule is to prevent unrelated provisions to be bundled together in one bill to gain support from different groups of legislature. This ensures that each measure are voted based on their merit and ensures that laws are clear, concise, and easy for the public and legislators to understand. We should urge the legislature voluntarily to follow the wisdom of that single-subject rule. The climate change super fund is particularly complex and will result in protracted litigation. New York passed its bill on December twenty-sixth of last year, and litigation began on February sixth, when a coalition of twenty-two states and four industry groups filed a lawsuit in federal court alleging the legislation was unconstitutional and preempted by federal law. This is similar to litigation argued against, filed against Vermont. Thus, the bill would focus on the importance of the super fund, that should focus on the importance of the super fund, not extraneous matters. Most importantly, the petitioners have agreed to the Select Board's amendment to warrant Article twenty-five. Please vote favorably, favorable action on warrant Article twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. I think our Congress needs to hear your single rule, single-subject rule. Ms. Lodish.
Hello, I'm Pam Lodish, Town Meeting Member, Precinct fourteen. And although I am here to represent the Advisory Committee, and although some members voiced potential lack of confidence that this program might work at the, as the sponsors of the article would like, they voted to support the article in principle. And by a vote of fifteen in favor, two against, and five abstentions, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action.
Thank you. Mr. Vitolo.
I am Tommy Vitolo, State Representative, fifteenth Norfolk District, Town Meeting Member at Large. My phone number is six one seven eight seven two eight nine two one. Please call me anytime with questions about the speech that I am about to give or anything else. Also, my phone's on mute. You could call now, I'm not going to answer. Or join me tonight at Garrison House after Town Meeting. I'm buying. I want to talk briefly about warrant articles twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, neither in support nor opposition. I don't think that we, as a body, did a very good job explaining home rules and resolutions about enabling legislation to new Town Meeting members. And I fail to explain how I, as Brookline's only Town Meeting Member and State Representative, manage the process. I apologize for that and will try to correct some of that oversight now. Article twenty-four, the real estate transfer tax article, was about our local government not having the authority to govern our town exactly as we see fit and seeking remedy from the state. There are three ways the state can confer power to a municipality. One, a home rule petition, wherein the state grants that one municipality the ability to tax, require, prohibit, or regulate in a specific way that would otherwise be inconsistent with state law. Once enacted, that superpower remains in place, and the community must adhere to that law. Two, a municipal option, wherein the state law is changed statewide so that any community that wishes can have that particular power and opt into having that power, typically through their local legislature, such as our Town Meeting. The third way is a wholesale change in state law, wherein that thing we wanted for our community is now the required standard for all three hundred fifty-one cities and towns. For warrant Article twenty-four last night, the petitioner preferred Option one, the Advisory Committee preferred Option two, and we, as a body, chose Option one. My general advice on this matter is ask for what you want. If you only want Brookline to have the power, the home rule is the clear way to go. If you want Brookline and other communities to have access to that power, resolve to pass municipal opt-in legislation. If you want to require all communities to adhere to the proposal, resolve for a wholesale change in state law. Ask for what you want. In all cases, as soon as I learn a petitioner is considering filing a warrant article to allow Brookline an additional local power, I immediately hold my cards close. I don't opine on whether or not it's a good idea or whether or not the details are quite right. And I don't vote. I abstain on all motions for the article. This is because if it passes, I will advocate for it at the State House. When our local government decides it wants a local power to govern Brookline more effectively, I am always on the team. I and the legislature do get it done for Brookline. Last session's Article ninety-seven home rule was the fourth passed for Brookline in my three terms as a legislator, along with moving some liquor licenses from Washington Square, changing project subbid requirements for the BHA Colonel Floyd Housing Development Project, and establishing a means-tested local senior property tax reduction. In the past six years, Brookline's four home rule petitions signed into law exceed all but a small handful of other cities and towns in Massachusetts. The other sixteen home rules Brookline has filed in the last six years, related to real estate transfer fees, rent control, meeting via Zoom, voting rights for sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, voting rights for lawful immigrants, ranked choice voting, and about a dozen others, all failed to pass. Nearly all failed to get out of the first committee. There's much more about local authority, but time is short. Onto warrant articles twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. They are not like the items I discussed above. They do not seek local authority to do anything. They wouldn't give the town of Brookline the authority to tax, restrict, require, or otherwise govern any differently. In all three cases, the petitioners imagine a better world, a world where a particular piece of general statewide legislation is passed. These warrant articles aren't about local control. They're about Massachusetts general law being more to the petitioner's liking. And while I will abstain from voting on these articles as well, I will not abstain from fully participating in the legislative process while these articles are pending, since, after all, the sixteen thousand one hundred forty Brookliners who voted for me just recently expect exactly that, for me to continue advocating for statewide legislation each and every day. I want to be clear. When the town seeks additional authority to govern Brookliners, I will always be there for the fight. One hundred percent, never blinking, cosponsoring, advocating, cajoling, politicking, the whole enchilada. When Brookline Town Meeting shares with me its aggregate opinion on general legislation, I will listen carefully. And just as I do any individual resident, advocacy organization, business owner, lobbyist, or colleague in the legislature, I will give Town Meeting's collective opinion the weight it deserves.
Thank you. Mr. Lynn Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am Sean Lynn Jones, Town Meeting Member, Precinct one, and President of the Brookline Green Space Alliance, recommending favorable action on Article twenty-five. I'm not going to repeat anything that has been said already. I think the speakers have done a fantastic job of making the case for this article, of making the case for favorable action on this article. I do want to take this opportunity to thank the petitioners of Article twenty-five for all their hard work in bringing this to Town Meeting, and belatedly to thank the petitioners of Articles eighteen and nineteen, which I spoke on last night. Brookline is a leader among communities when it comes to environmental protection and climate change, and it's thanks to the petitioners of Article twenty-five, Articles eighteen and nineteen, and all the people who work so hard on these issues that we have that leadership status. Please vote favorable action on Article twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two more speakers, so let's, let's hear the two speakers and then we'll have a vote. Next speaker is Mr. Clafter.
David Clafter, Town Meeting Member, Precinct ten. I think, I'll be very brief. I think the issue here is not if someone is going to pay for adaptation to climate change, but rather it's who will pay for it. We all know, or should know, that the adaptations necessary to meet the challenges of climate change are going to be astronomically expensive. We also can reasonably expect that we all will pay either as taxpayers or just protecting our own households on our own if, if the state or federal government don't step in. This situation, this legislation would guarantee that we're not facing those costs alone, that those who did the damage pay for it. It's expected it could generate many billions of dollars over the next twenty-five years. The article is supported, in addition to the organizations listed earlier in the slides, as a priority legislation of Mass Power Forward, which is a coalition of over two hundred climate and environmental groups throughout Massachusetts. The legislation has been passed in, in New York and Vermont, but is pending in California and Maryland and Illinois and a number of other states. We all know the storm is coming. The question is, are we going to take steps to prepare for it? And so I urge you to pass this warrant article. Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker is Brookline High School Senior Toby Silman. And introduce yourself when you start.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Toby Silman, and I'm a Precinct Five resident Bicycle Advisory Committee Member and a Brookline High School graduate as of this Sunday. As a student, I've performed several concerts in this auditorium, but it's my first time speaking at Town Meeting. And I'm also a leader of the Brookline High School Climate and Food Justice Club, which is why I urge you all to support Warrant Article twenty-five, which would deliver a bold victory for climate justice if passed. Climate Action Brookline Co-President John Harris and other climate allies of ours recently asked for our support of this article, which urges the state to establish a climate change super fund. Our club believes that the largest contributors to state emissions should be held accountable for their adverse impacts on the environment and public health. For centuries, the deployment, development, and maintenance of fossil fuels and fossil fuel infrastructure has been embraced by governments and corporations, causing drastic environmental and financial harm. The cost to ordinary taxpayers is extremely high. As recently as two thousand twenty-two, US fossil fuel subsidies from the government, direct and indirect, reached a staggering seven hundred fifty-seven billion dollars. Fortunately, there is a simple solution. If passed, this article would sign the town on to an increasingly relevant statewide initiative known as Make Polluters Pay. This would counteract centuries of fiscal irresponsibility and force the state's leading polluters, rather than taxpayers, to pay for their environmental havoc. We commend John Harris and his co-petitioners for this article and eagerly support this visionary step towards addressing the climate crisis and the inequity which it has caused. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see no one at the microphones. I don't have any other speakers signed up, so I think we're ready for a vote. So this is a vote on the motion on pages twenty-five five to twenty-five six in support of the legislation to establish a climate change super fund. Yes, supports it. No, you don't. Ready? Drop the vote whenever you can. We're voting.
One ninety-two, three, fifteen.
Vote passes, one ninety-two, three, fifteen abstentions. Article twenty-six is a resolution to prevent the forced payment of broker's fees by tenants. The motion is on page twenty-six ten through twenty-six thirteen. The motion is bade by Mr. Lebavitz and seconded by Mr. Pearlman. And I give you bye. Okay, Mr. Lebavitz.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. Alec Lebavitz, Town Meeting Member, Precinct eight, Member of the Advisory Committee, speaking on behalf of the petitioners of Warrant Article twenty-six, a resolution expressing Town Meeting's support for the amending of state law to prohibit the forced payment of broker's fees by tenants. Next slide, please. Under existing state law, landlords are prohibited from requiring a prospective tenant to pay more than the first month's rent, the last month's rent, a security deposit typically equal to a month's rent, and the purchase of a lock and key at the time of signing a new lease. However, the practical reality facing renters in Brookline and throughout the Commonwealth is a near ubiquitous requirement that, in addition to these costs, they will be forced to pay a broker's fee to secure lease. This is due to an aggregate shortage of rental units and an historically low rental vacancy rate, which allows landlords to shop for a tenant who is willing to pay the fee for the services of a real estate broker hired by the landlord, in effect exploiting market realities to circumvent the spirit of state law. These forced broker's fees are typically equivalent to an additional month's rent, increasing the standard cost due at signing for Massachusetts renters by thirty-three percent. In the midst of a housing affordability crisis, this practice only contributes to the hardship facing Brookline renters, in some cases preventing them from signing new leases or even trapping them in an unstable or unsafe housing situation. And after New York City recently banned similar practices in two thousand twenty-four, Greater Boston remains the last major metropolitan area in the country that allows forced broker payments to continue as a standard practice. Next slide. In her FY twenty-six budget proposal introduced earlier this year, Governor Healey proposed an amendment to state law that would close this existing loophole that permits forced payment of broker fees. Her proposed language, which I've included on this slide, would explicitly require that whichever party hires a broker during a lease negotiation be responsible for paying the broker's fee. If codified into law, this would effectively end the practice of forced broker fee payments by tenants while still permitting tenants who wish to engage a broker services to do so as normal. Next slide, please. Both the State House and State Senate FY twenty-six budgets have also included proposed amendments to the existing state law governing lease negotiations. The Senate's language closely mirrors Governor Healey's proposal, while the House has proposed a modified version that allows tenant payment of broker's fees only when the tenant hires the broker themselves or makes initial contact with the broker and receives an advance disclosure of the fee's inclusion in signing costs. Next slide, please. Warrant Article twenty-six provides an opportunity for Town Meeting to weigh in on a major housing policy proposal under current consideration by the governor and both chambers of the legislature, which is timely as a conference committee has begun to meet to finalize the FY twenty-six state budget. This article affirms Town Meeting's support for the elimination of forced broker's fees and, in particular, urges our state legislative delegation to support Governor Healey's proposed language, which has been adopted by the Senate. As a majority renter community facing a housing affordability crisis, this state reform has the potential to reduce signing costs and improve flexibility in the housing market for numerous Brookline residents, and the petitioners believe that this is a decision point where Town Meeting should make its voice heard. Next slide, please. I ask that you join with the Select Board, the Advisory Committee, the Housing Advisory Board, and the Advisory Council on Public Health in voting favorable action on Warrant Article twenty-six. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Pearlman.
Good evening. David Pearlman, Select Board, speaking on behalf of the Select Board. Warrant Article twenty-six, as we just heard, is a petition resolution that asks the town to express strong support for state legislation to ban forcing tenants to pay for broker fees in rental transactions. The state's language reflects that the party that hires the broker will pay the fee. In Brookline and throughout the Commonwealth, as we heard, landlord-imposed tenant-paid broker fees have become increasingly common, usually equivalent to one month's rent. This additional upfront cost can be prohibitive on renters struggling to come up with first and last month's rent. The Select Board felt it was appropriate for this resolution to be sent to the state legislature while this state legislation is currently being debated. By a vote of five to zero to zero, the Select Board recommends favorable action. By a vote of 5 to 0 to 0, the Select Board recommends favorable action.
Mr. Penzel. And Mr. Homer is next.
Good evening. Mark Penzel, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 2, speaking for the Advisory Committee, which, as you've heard, recommends favorable action on Warren Article 26 and did so by a vote of 16 to 1 to 4. The discussion at Advisory focused on whether or not the banning of these fees would do any good. One member felt that passing such late legislation could leave tenants worse off. He believed that the full cost of the broker's fee would be passed on to the tenant in the form of increased rent, and to compensate the landlord for the lost time value of the broker's fee, the total increase in annual rent would exceed the amount of the fee. Another believed that there are more concrete steps the town could take to support renters, such as being more responsive to tenant complaints, so that inspectors showed up promptly when called and so that landlords would be forced to respond. Others felt the economics of broker's fees are less rigid and that the market seems to be responding with no broker's fee ads for apartments and online services that allows brokers to be circumvented. Another member commented that passing legislation of this sort is often like whack-a-mole, but that these fees were a mole worth whacking and that hopefully the next mole, if any, would be smaller. Thus, even if the landlord passes along the cost of the broker's fee in the form of increased rent, those rental payments would be spread out over a year, lowering the initial barrier to signing a new lease. Another agreed that the economics may indeed come out the same, but noted that the legislation attempts to shift the cost of these fees from the individual with the least ability to afford them, the tenant, to the entity most able to do so, the landlord. Because of this, such legislation is likely to reduce barriers to entry and make it easier for a tenant to afford to leave a bad landlord for a better situation. It was agreed that neither of the pending proposals will ensure that landlords do not simply pass along the fee as increased rent. And after adding some minor clarifying language, the Advisory Committee urges favorable action on Warren Article 26.
Thank you. Mr. Homer. After Mr. Homer's, Mr. Klein, who is the last signed-up speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Charles Homer, Town Meeting Member for Precinct 8 and Chair of the Advisory Council on Public Health, speaking primarily on behalf of the Advisory Council on Public Health. Brookline's outstanding Director of Public Health and Human Services, Sigal Reese, stated that health is shaped by the conditions in which people live, learn, work, and play, the social determinants of health. A broad cross-section of Brookline's community established four priorities for the town's efforts to improve and sustain the health of its residents. In addition to housing affordability, about which you've heard me speak often, the priorities include financial security, access to social and health services, and mental and behavioral health. More specifically, for financial security, the goal is that everyone in the Brookline community will achieve financial well-being and the economic security needed to thrive. Specific objectives in pursuit of this goal includes increasing the percentage of Brookline residents reporting monthly money left over at the end of the month, increasing that level amount by 10% by 2027. Renters typically need to pay, as you've heard from the previous speakers, first and last month's rent, often a security deposit, and then an additional fee is typically passed on through this broker's fees, which means, given average rents in our town, renters would need to have at least 11,000 and maybe more cash on hand at the time of renting a unit. This means, related to my earlier comments, that for many renters, this depletes their cash reserves, their bank accounts, leaving them vulnerable to the next emergency expense, conflicting with our community's specific goals of achieving financial well-being. Given the importance of financial well-being and economic security as a premeditation for health, as well as the importance of safe, stable, and well-maintained and affordable housing, ACPH urges approval of this warrant article. And again, following on the political situation, I just note that, given that we've had these two different versions passed by the Senate and the House, that we would strongly be in favor of what the Senate's version is, and urge through endorsing this resolution, that we urge our legislative delegation to influence the Conference Committee to come up with that result. I urge your support for Warren Article 26. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Klein. Okay. There's no need to call the question because we have no more speakers signed up. I thank you, Mr. Klein. So we're ready for a vote. And this is a vote on the motion, pages 26 through 13. Yes, you're in favor of supporting the legislation? No, you're not. Drop the vote. And we're voting. 200 even?
Yes.
200 even? Yes, 4, no, and 7 abstentions. So the motion passes. Okay, moving on to Article 27. The motion, it's a resolution concerning Back From the Brink of Nuclear War. The motion is on pages 27-3 to 27-5. It has been moved, it's moved by Mr. Pearlman and seconded by Beth Miller. And you will recall Ms. Udolova was with us back in November with a bylaw. Okay.
Hello, everyone. My name is Maria Udolova. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Like Toby, I'm also a senior. I'm graduating this Sunday from Brookline High School.
Thank you. Thank you. I've been involved in nuclear disarmament advocacy since my junior year, but basically throughout my entire life, I've had a deep care for our planet and, you know, the people and all the life that live on it. And I believe that nuclear weapons seriously threaten that well-being, and I believe that we should do everything in our power to remove that threat. I, thank you. I also believe that we have the power to take initiative on this problem and that we can create change at the local level. And one of the steps that we can take to do this is to pass this.
Okay, should be back.
Okay, I think we're back online. Sorry about that. And talk into the mic.
Hello.
You almost have to swallow it.
All right. There are also two bills that we should pay attention to today. The first one is the National Back From the Brink Resolution Bill, or HRS 317. The most recent update is it was referred to the Committee on Foreign Affairs and the Committee on Armed Services. And then the other bill is the Massachusetts Resolution Bill, or S1649. And the most recent update on this was that it was referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Homeland Security. Another important piece of, I would say, policy to consider today. Next slide, please. Sorry. Is the TPNW, or the Treaty for the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, which is a comprehensive set of prohibitions on participating in any nuclear weapon activity, like developing, testing, producing, stockpiling, other verbs associated with nuclear weapons, which you could see up there. It prohibits the deployment of nuclear weapons on national territory and assistance to any state in the conduct of prohibited activities related to nuclear weapons. It also obligates states' parties to provide adequate assistance to individuals affected by the use or testing of weapons, and requires the state's parties to provide appropriate measures for environmental mediation for areas that have been affected by nuclear weapons use or testing. Next slide, please. There has been a Brookline precedent for support of this resolution. In 2018, the town passed Warren Article 35, or the same exact resolution, and other support includes the very recent Needham passage of the same resolution. And also, across Massachusetts, there are more than 20 municipalities that have also passed this resolution. Next slide, please. So what does Warren Article 27 do and how is it different from Warren Article 35? 27 reaffirms Brookline's commitment to urging the federal leaders and the nation to make nuclear disarmament the centerpiece of U.S. national security policy. It advocates for U.S. participation in signing the TPNW, and it also endorses the policy provisions of the Back From the Brink Resolution, which I mentioned earlier. Additionally, it urges the passage of existing state and federal Back From the Brink Resolution, so the two bills that I mentioned earlier. Next slide, please. And the reason that I and many others believe it is really important to reaffirm this is because this reaffirmation upholds Brookline's commitment to disarmament. It's also important to reaffirm after six years, because since 2018, there have been a lot of geopolitical developments, a lot of which have contributed to rising political tensions, and those tensions have contributed to arising in the chances that we will use one of these nuclear weapons. So I believe that it's important to reaffirm Brookline's commitment to disarmament and peace. Additionally, this reinforces support for other municipalities across Massachusetts and across the country to pass this resolution. Next slide, please. So this would be a step towards peace. It has no financial impact. It reflects Brookline's values and commitments, and it creates a previously tested foundation for crucial change on nuclear weapons. And I know that nuclear weapons can seem like a topic that is far out of the scope of Brookline's Town Meeting, but this is an issue that affects our country, our state, and also our town, and we have the power to take action on this topic. So please vote favorable action on Warren Article 27. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Pearlman, Select Board, speaking on behalf of the Select Board. Warren Article 27, as we just heard, is a citizen petition resolution that asks the town to express support for efforts such as the Back From the Brink Resolution and other legislative initiatives to urge leaders to take immediate steps to prevent nuclear war. Warren Article 27 in its original form included five policy initiatives. First, to actively pursue a verifiable agreement among nuclear armed states to eliminate their nuclear arsenals. Second, renouncing the use of nuclear first strikes. Third, taking U.S. nuclear weapons off a hair-trigger alert. Fourth, canceling the plan to replace the current nuclear arsenal with enhanced nuclear weaponry. And fifth, renouncing the sole unchecked authority of the president to launch a nuclear attack. While the Select Board during our initial discussion was generally quite supportive of efforts to prevent nuclear war, this one component of renouncing the sole unchecked authority of the president to launch a nuclear attack seemed like a step too far, not because any of us support nuclear warfare, but on account of the constitutional implications for the president's broad Article 2, Section 2 powers as Commander-in-Chief of the Armed Forces. The Select Board believed that implicitly asking to either debate interpretation or amend the U.S. Constitution to change general executive branch war powers would distract from the laudable main purpose of this warrant article. Thus, the Select Board proposed an amended version of Warren Article 27 that removed the first ending the president's sole unchecked authority to launch nuclear attack provision from the now-therefore-be-resolved paragraph. Other than that one modification, the Select Board version and the petitioner's original version were identical. My understanding is that the petitioner has since agreed to the Select Board amended version. Thus, the Select Board voted unanimously, 5, 0 to 0, for favorable action on its amended version of Warren Article 27.
Thank you. Mr. Brown. We have one more speaker after this, or possibly two.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. With Brown, speaking on behalf of the Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee voted to make no recommendation on Article 27 by a vote of 12 in favor, 5 opposed with 4 abstentions. The committee asked the petitioners several questions before discussing what, if any, position to take. The petitioners were asked if any of the nine nuclear powers have signed the UN resolution. They answered that none of them have. They were asked if they believed that if Ukraine had not voluntarily given up nuclear weapons, it would have prevented Russia from invading. They offered the opinion it would not have deferred, deterred Russia. They were also asked if the United States signed the UN's Back From the Brink Resolution. It would be tantamount to unilateral disarmament. We heard just a couple of minutes ago that it would not, because it's not what that resolution calls for. In addition to supporting, reaffirming Brookline's support for the 2018 resolution, again, as stated earlier, passage of 27 would support the state and federal efforts to pass the Back From the Brink Resolution, which are currently in the legislative process. The committee discussed the foreign policy and geopolitical nature of this resolution and others like it that come before Town Meeting. It was noted that the Advisory Committee, on several occasions, has made no recommendation on articles in circumstances where the committee believes it has no particular advice, experience, or expertise to offer. Some members felt we should make a recommendation, either because of the bills in the state and federal legislatures, or because nuclear weapons are not a distant foreign policy decision. Most of the committee, however, felt the Advisory Committee could not offer any relevant knowledge or expertise in an analysis and recommendation to Town Meeting. Therefore, the Advisory Committee voted 12 in favor, with 5 opposed and 4 abstentions to offer no recommendation on Article 27. Thank you.
Now, Ms. Miller. And I miscounted. Come on up, Ms. Miller. Okay. Ms. Van De Zeele. I have one more speaker, and then we'll have a question.
Good evening. My name is Cornelia Van De Zeele, also known as Kaya Van De Zeele, resident of Precinct 15. I stand before you to speak in favor of Warren Article 27, a resolution reaffirming the town of Brookline's support of the Back From the Brink Resolution that we passed here in Town Meeting in 2018. This warrant article, this current one, in addition, is asking our state and congressional representatives to support legislation that is currently being considered in the State House and the U.S. Congress. I hope I don't have to, I don't need to convince any of you of the intolerable and existential threat that nuclear weapons pose to all of humanity and the earth. Although there's been talk of a limited nuclear exchange, such as that between, that is threatened by the warring neighbors, India and Pakistan, any attack would surely be followed by retaliation that is estimated to kill thousands, if not millions, immediately, and would be followed by the deaths of billions more due to nuclear famine. Of course, this does not address the immoral and undemocratic implications of such indiscriminate use of weapons of mass destruction. The recently ratified UN Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons gives us hope that we can avoid a nuclear catastrophe. The international campaign to abolish nuclear weapons received a Nobel Prize for this in There are many movements around the U.S. and the world addressing the risks posed by nuclear weapons. As a board member of Greater Boston Physicians for Social Responsibility, I I am speaking in favor of Warren Article 27, as I did for the Warren Article in 2018. We are joined in this effort by our National Physicians for Social Responsibility, International Physicians for the Prevention of Nuclear War, the Union of Concerned Scientists, PAX Christi, and many others. The points of this effort are contained in the resolution. I don't need to go over those again. If you want to see who all the supporting organizations and states and municipalities, you can go to PreventNuclearWar.org. In 2018, the New England Journal of Medicine published the 2000, published an article, or an opinion piece, the 2015 Nobel Peace Prize, and the Doomsday Clock, "The End of Nuclear War or the End of Us." That really says it all. In addition to voting in favor of Warren Article 27, I urge you to contact your state and federal congressional representatives and ask them to sponsor and support Back from the Brink Resolutions. Or join us. I invite you to join us as we reach out to our elected officials. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. One last speaker, another Brookline High School senior? Freshman? Oh, okay. Alma Beck.
Hello, my name is Alma Beck, and I'm a freshman at Brookline High School. I've been involved with disarmament for almost a year now. When I first heard about the disarmament efforts in Brookline, I'll admit, I was a tiny bit skeptical. Nuclear war seems like such a huge, complicated, and largetail threat. It didn't seem like something you could effect from a local level. However, I was absolutely wrong, and I'm here to make sure none of you have the same misconception when making your decision tonight. At the height of the Cold War, the U.S. had over 30,000 nuclear weapons in its arsenal. Today, the U.S. only has about 3,700. That is an 88% decrease, much of which happened in the late '80s alone. That is an incredible step away from the brink of nuclear war in a remarkably short amount of time. That change came about because the citizens of this country were speaking out about the dangers of nuclear weapons. It came about as a result of the pressure put on the federal government by state and local governments from towns passing resolutions exactly like this one. And though there has been incredible progress, as I mentioned, the truth is that it is not even close to enough. There are still enough nuclear weapons in the world today to destroy humanity many times over. Considering how many conflicts there are involving nuclear armed states today, the threat of nuclear war is not far-fetched. We cannot let this threat get bigger, especially when we know exactly how to fight it. Lastly, I'd like to emphasize that Brookline has already supported the Back from the Brink Resolution. We are not introducing any new ideas that have not already been agreed upon at town meeting. The only difference in this Warren article is that it also urges the state and federal government to support the resolution, which is the kind of important action that made real change in the past and will make real change today. Nuclear war is a terrifying threat, but the situation is not hopeless, and we are not helpless. We have a say in whether or not these weapons of mass destruction will be a part of our future. We have a say in whether or not there'll be more victims of the horrors of nuclear war. The action starts here, tonight. Please vote favorable action of Warren Article 27. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lynn Jones at the mic.
I'm Sean Lynn Jones, town meeting member from Precinct 1, and I just have a question about the Select Board's amendment and exactly what was intended. The marked-up version of that first-resolved clause appears on Page 27.3. And the line of deleting some of the language there deletes the word "first" as well as the reference to the president's authority. So my question is, did the Select Board, and maybe the petitioners too, intend this to say renouncing the option of using nuclear weapons just in general? Or renouncing first use of nuclear weapons? And I raise this question because we've heard several times that the only change was to the president's authority. And there is a big difference between renouncing first use and renouncing second use and saying to any adversary that you're not going to retaliate.
Mr. Pearlman on matters--
Regardless of the answer to that question, there's a missing comma that needs to be reinserted before the word "taken."
David Pearlman, Select Board. The intention was just to remove the ending the president's sole unchecked authority to launch a nuclear attack. It's not about to first do it or do it responsibly. It's to just not be addressing the, removing a president's unchecked authority.
If it's a Scrivener's error, I'm sure it can be corrected.
Tell me where the comma should go.
Well, at the bottom of 27.4, three lines up, it should read "renouncing the option of using nuclear weapons first," comma, and then continuing with "taking," et cetera.
Do you accept that as a Scrivener's error? Okay, then I'll--
I just wanted to clarify--
I'll take that correction.
I did spend my entire career working on these issues and can talk at much greater length, but I won't.
You won't. Thank you for that, Mr. Sean Lynn Jones. Mr. Richmond.
Quick question, Clint Richmond, Precinct 6. I was wondering if anyone could remind us what our vote was on the 2018 resolution?
I suspect we don't have that handy, but I also suspect that there was overwhelming support.
I don't know if it was a voice vote or what. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Robotham.
Hi, Margaret Robotham, town meeting member, Precinct 3. I remember this time, Mr. Moderator. Question, let's say that we all win the award for best liberal, and this passes. What does that mean for our town? Does this create work for our town clerk? Do our bureaucrats have to spend time filing this or doing anything? Is there an intern who has to formally send something to the White House trying to better understand what this actually does on a practical, operational level?
I'll take one shot at this. The very last paragraph instructs the town clerk to send a copy of this to a number of folks, including Donald Trump, and I'm sure this is going to have a very big impact on him. Other than that, is there any other requirement? I'm looking at the town administrator.
Hi, Jess Carey, town administrator. Thank you for your question. No, there's no immediate, there's no requirement in a non-binding resolution. Obviously, we do what the Select Board tells us to do. And so if the Select Board asks us to do something in furtherance of this, we will do it. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other speakers, no other folks at the mics, so I think we're ready for a vote. The motion is on Pages 27.3 to 27.5, with one Scrivener's error, Scrivener's error. On the third line from the bottom on Page 27.4, after the word "weapons," it would be "weapons first," comma, taking U.S. nuclear weapons off hair-trigger alert, et cetera. Okay, we ready to vote? Let's do it. Drop it. And we're voting.
161, 17, 32.
Motion passes 161, 17, to 32. Article 28. This is a resolution, Article 28 is a resolution affirming the town's commitment to democracy. The motion is on Article 28, Supplement 1, Pages 1 and 2. The motion is made by Mr. Gordon and seconded by Mr. Grossman. Mr. Gordon. And Ms. Childs will be the next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Neil Gordon, Precinct 1 Town Meeting Member. I'm a member of the Advisory Committee, co-chair of Brookline PAX. I'm a United States Navy veteran. In 1969, I raised my right hand and swore an oath to defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. Tonight, I fulfill a vow I made 56 years ago. Fulfilling that vow in a time, place, and fashion I never imagined. Tonight, I ask you, my town meeting colleagues, to stand with me, with Andrew Fisher, my co-petitioner, with the Advisory Committee, with the Select Board, and with Brookline PAX. Stand with us against Trump and his corrupt administration. Stand with us and defend the Constitution of the United States and the rule of law. As the Trump administration is recommending the renaming of our ships, erasing the names Thurgood Marshall, Ruth Bader Ginsburg, Harriet Tubman, Harvey Milk, Caesar Chavez, Medgar Evers, and others, I ask you to stand with us and protect those who are being unfairly targeted because of their immigration status, country of origin, race, religion, gender, gender expression, sexual preference, or other unfair, illegal, or immoral characterization. Stand with us because silence is complicity, and this is not a time to be silent. Prior to the Advisory Committee's public hearing, petitioners were asked, "Do you know whether town meeting previously considered any Warren articles that addressed the same or similar topic?" Petitioners answered yes, and quoted from the minutes of a prior town meeting. "Voted that this town thinks itself happy to be always ready to add their MITE," spelled M-I-T-E in the meeting minutes, "towards withstanding any arbitrary or despotic measures which may be carried on to overthrow the Constitution," referring to the then partially unwritten Massachusetts Constitution. Silence is complicity. But on January 3, 1773, 11 months before the Boston Tea Party, Brookline Town Meeting was not silent. We made a difference then, and we'll make a difference tonight. Serving at sea, serving in a ship of war, there were five most terrifying words no sailor ever wanted to hear. This is not a drill. Brookline, this is not a drill. Stand for democracy and vote yes. Defend the Constitution and the rule of law and vote yes. Silence is complicity. Tonight, while we're still free to do so, let town meeting not be silent. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would only add to what my co-petitioners said, that Andrew Fisher, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 13, who proudly stands up in the face of tyranny and a would-be king. I only want to add to what Neil so eloquently has said. We've done this before at Brookline Town Meeting in 1773, even before Sam Adamson at the Tea Party, and we should be doing it again now. We should stand up to people, to kings who want to rule by tyranny. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Childs.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You'll have to adjust the mic.
Oh.
Yeah, okay.
Is that better?
That'll do it.
Okay. I am Elizabeth Childs, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4, speaking in opposition to Article 28. I might be persuaded to vote for this article if this body unanimously agrees that after this, we waste no more time discussing the shortcomings of Mr. Trump, but instead focus on important work which directly impacts our neighbors, namely, Brookline's real fiscal problems. Structural deficits in both town and school budgets, rising tax and housing cost burdens, deferred maintenance of buildings, streets, sidewalks, and equipment, and genuine dilemmas we face with getting our zoning quote "right" for the benefit of all. Short of that, I offer three reasons why we should not pass this article. First, to state the obvious. This is a very politicized article, which fails to persuade anyone who voted for President Trump that they do not support democracy. More than 3,400 Brookline voters, 12% of the electorate. Article 28 doesn't beat about the bush on holding ourselves accountable for our disdain or congratulating ourselves that we in town meeting are the true patriots. But what purpose does this serve? Do we persuade anyone? Is it performative? Yes. Is it substantive? No. Our presence here affirms our commitment to the most fundamental form of self-government, town meeting. Democracy means living with and abiding by outcomes with which we sometimes personally, even vehemently disagree, but which we acknowledge are the will of our fellow citizens. This article is inherently contradictory, stating that we believe in and support democracy after first trashing the democratic will of the majority of Americans. Second, the article is menacingly vague. I quote, "We affirm that we will defend, we will rise to protect." What do we mean by "defend"? How do we propose to rise up to protect? I certainly hope it does not mean condoning vandalism of Teslas or interference with dedicated federal employees doing their jobs, like my son. Does this involve our police acting or not acting? Does this ask our town council to file litigation? Does this ask us to make a financial commitment to back up our affirmation that we will defend and protect? Local militias require resources. Are we encouraging the Brookline Tea Party, or are we vilifying rioting? Finally, the article does not identify how changes in the federal government affect our town. Perhaps a more useful article might be to charge a group in town to monitor actual federal impacts on Brookline, quantify any harm, and recommend a course of action to negotiate compromise with federal government employees. In the meantime, I invite you to join me in voting no on tired provocative rhetoric, and instead in acting with responsible stewardship to improve the effective functioning of our town's government through our shared commitment to serious and respectful debate on issues that directly impact our community. Thank you for listening to me. Good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Grossman.
Hi there, Perry Grossman, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5, speaking for the Advisory Committee. The revised Article 28 proposes that town meeting affirm that it stands by the Constitution of the United States, the rule of law, and that as the elected legislature of the town, it will defend the Constitution and will protect those who are unfairly targeted. Article 28 urges elected town officials in the town of Brookline and residents of the town to join town meeting in defense of the Constitution, the rule of law, and of democracy. By a vote of 21 to 0 to 2, the Advisory Committee voted in favor of the revised and amended Article 28. The Advisory Committee discussed the role of the Advisory Committee in making recommendations on such resolutions, discussed support for the article, the revisions, and possible amendments to the article. First off, the Advisory Committee's school subcommittee had recommended that the Advisory Committee make no recommendation on the original version of the article. The subcommittee's perspective was that the Advisory Committee has no better view on such resolutions in town meeting. And proponents for no recommendation are-- And proponents for no recommendation argued for consistency across resolution warrant articles, saying that if the Advisory Committee is going to vote no recommendation on some resolutions, then it should vote no recommendation on all resolutions. Rather, Advisory Committee members should focus on being informed about and reporting and making recommendations on town fiscal matters. The second was discussion about in favor of the article, with people saying it is okay to vote on resolutions, deciding issue by issue as they see fit. Several members supported the article asserting it is simply a defense of the Constitution and the rule of law. One member said, "If we cannot say that we stand by the Constitution, then we do not have any business being in government." Another member recalled squaring an oath to the Constitution when joining town meeting. A few members discussed moments in history where people stood up against tyranny and asked for such bravery today. Some said this resolution is, in fact, direct relevant business for the Advisory Committee, connected directly to local and state governance. One member said that not all the concerns raised by the school subcommittee were addressed. Other people questioned about whether we should specify useful action, and we discussed possible amendments, and we took out the words "take action too" in the second paragraph of the resolution.
I hope you'll conclude.
Sure. So we took out those words, "take action too," and we voted 21 to 0 to 2 in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vance Skoyak.
John Vance Skoyak for the Select Board. Article 28 is a resolution to affirm the town's commitment to democracy, the rule of law, and the U.S. Constitution in response to the certain actions of the incumbent presidential administration. The article takes issue with acts that it defines as illegal and unconstitutional, in particular against vulnerable communities, and declares the town meeting stands in opposition to such acts, urging the town and residents to join in this sentiment. The board concurred with the sentiment of the article as revised by the Advisory Committee, and a unanimous Select Board voted 5 to 0 for favorable action on Article 28 as amended by the Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Mr. Soifer here? He told me that he might not be, so, okay. Got to put my glove. I'm going to take the call of the question. There are three speakers. They're all in favor: Mr. Bueno, Green, and Kim Smith. Sorry. Ready for a vote? What's happening, Dave? Should I let them speak? This is a vote to close debates. If we can get it up there. Okay, I'm told they're ready, please. Okay, we're voting. Vote. Motion passes 184, 23, 8. We now are ready to vote the main motion, which is on Supplement 1, Article 28, Supplement 1, pages 1 and 2. Whenever you're ready, please drop them. Okay, we're voting.
72, 15, 28.
Motion passes 172, 15, 28. Okay, we're moving on to Article 30, and I'm going to be turning the mic over to Mr. Karen.
We having fun yet? So, John Karen, Assistant Town Moderator, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 12, and the designated survivor. Okay, so at least some of you know how we got here. We will see what happens when they let the student drive. Anyway, let me try to, if we can, I'd just like to take a couple of minutes very quickly to try to explain what we're voting and how we're going to vote. I posted an explanation of this yesterday. Ms. Vogt also posted a very good flowchart, to which I think we all owe her a debt of thanks, as we should for all of the flowcharts that she does for us. But let me tell you where we're at, and I might get lost if I don't check my notes. So, originally, the warrant article started out as a resolution directed to the Moderators' Committee on Forms of Government and asking it essentially to do some additional work and do a few things. After the filing of that article, but before town meeting, the Moderators' Committee on Towns' Forms of Government filed its final report and dissolved. So there was no one to direct the resolution, to direct anybody to do things. Those are mine. Without those, I am lost. Nope, that's okay. Let me double-check. Nope, these are mine. So anyway, at that point, the motion was sort of like the mail I get from my dad, who passed a few years ago, asking to donate to charity. No harm in asking, but it's not going to accomplish anything. So, Mr. Rosenthal substituted a motion to refer the subject matter to a committee to be appointed by the Select Board with a charge for them to do three things. That is presently the main motion before everyone, and it appears on Supplement 1, Page 1, which is a blue sheet, but sadly not the only blue supplement sheet. The Advisory Committee, after considering Mr. Rosenthal's motion, made a motion to amend Mr. Rosenthal's motion by striking three words from the second-numbered bullet points of directions to the committee, striking the phrase, excuse me, striking the words, "review, evaluate, and end" from Mr. Rosenthal's motion, such that the committee that the Select Board would be asked to appoint would merely be asked to augment the work of the Moderators' Committee on Forms of Government. Mr. Rosenthal did not accept that amendment, so the original main motion will be the Mr. Rosenthal's, but there will be a motion from the Advisory Committee, which voted favorable action on the motion as amended, to amend the motion. Subsequent to that, Mr. Bernbaum filed a motion, which is a substitute motion to refer the subject matter instead of to a committee created by the Select Board, to the Youth Council. So, here's how the voting is going to work on this. I laid it out in my email, and Ms. Vogt's flowchart is very good, but I'd like to offer what may be another useful analogy if anybody's ever confused by this. The way I visualize it in my mind is like NCAA basketball March Madness brackets, or football or baseball playoffs, okay? So, the first round is Mr. Rosenthal's motion versus the AC amendment. We vote on that, and the winner of that first-round game becomes the main motion, and they get to advance to the semifinals where they play Mr. Bernbaum's motion. We will then vote on the AC or Rosenthal motion versus the Bernbaum motion. The winner of that game then advances to the finals, which is an up-and-down vote by town meeting as to whether to adopt it or reject it. I don't know if that helped clarify it, but that's how we're going to do things. Let me tell you a little bit about how I'm going to organize the debate, and I want to preface it by saying that the Assistant Moderator is very aware that it is incredibly hot in here. This is the last article of the last night of town meeting, and I get it. However, my obligation is to make sure that enough information has been presented to allow town meeting members an opportunity to make an informed decision. So, here's how the debate is going to proceed. We will first hear a presentation from the proponents, which is usually what happens, which is Mr. Rosenthal and any other folks that he has deemed that he wants you to hear from during his initial block of time. Then we will hear from the primary opponents group, which is coordinated by Mr. Gadsby. So, it's a unique opportunity for us here, isn't it? But more to the point, an obvious reason why I'm standing at the podium today. I have given, and I underappreciate that this is not going to be popular with some folks, I have given each side the opportunity for their initial presentation to have 12 minutes. Now, that is only three minutes more per side than what is customary anyway. So we're talking a total of six minutes. And I have made everyone aware, as I believe they all are, that just because I have agreed to allow this, doesn't mean you have to use all your time. So, but that is up to them, and I will say that my thought process was, there are a number of speakers signed up on both sides, as well as some folks who have signed up to speak in favor of the AC motion. We may not reach all of them, but I suspect that my procedure is not going to lengthen the total debate time that we spend. After we hear from the proponents and the opponents, we will hear from the Advisory Committee, then we will hear from the Select Board, and then we will hear from Mr. Bernbaum. I will not accept a motion to call the question until we have heard from the proponents, the opponents, the Advisory Committee, the Select Board, and Mr. Bernbaum. After that, we'll see where it takes us, and I'm sure everyone who has signed up to speak or who is already going to be guaranteed a spot appreciates, as do I, that this is the last article of the last night of town meeting in an auditorium that at least up here feels like it's 90 degrees warm. I get it, but we all signed up to have a job to do, so thank you for the respect that I know you're going to give everybody, whether you disagree with them, agree with them, or really wish you could get the heck out of here. All right, let's start the debate. We will hear from, first from the proponents, Mr. Rosenthal. And you have 12 minutes.
Mr. Moderator, I'm Marty Rosenthal, Precinct 9. Before I begin, may I just, on a point of order, clarify two things you just said?
Well, Mr. Rosenthal, I will indulge you if it's quick, but I would remind you that you already have 12 minutes, which is way more than most people.
Well, you'll appreciate the first one.
Okay.
You missed an email that I sent you that we're agreeing to the advisory version.
I did miss that. I'm sorry. Well, apparently we have a winner in the first-round playoffs. Let's, all right, we're going right to the, we're going, we're going to be going to the semifinals. So, thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. You're absolutely right. I should have given you the opportunity to share that, and as you can tell, everyone's delighted to hear it.
I'm going to be a second. You didn't really get straight why we get a referral motion, but that doesn't matter.
I'll tell you what, I suggest you put that all out on the town meeting members' list, sir. For historical accuracy, people will be fascinated.
I think that's less relevant, I hope, than everything I'm going to say.
All right, so are you ready to proceed, Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So, as I said, I'm Marty Rosenthal, Precinct 9. I also am a former Select Board Member, and I'm speaking for PACS. And for this existential town issue, we have to at least ask you to beg you to skim what we put in the combined reports. The wherewithal is expiration supplements 1 and 2, there is no supplement, sorry, supplement 1 and 3, there's no supplement 2. And also, what I said last week, PACS's warrant addendum. May I have Slide 1, please? This is former Governor Dukakis commenting on the Moderators' Committee in the second and last paragraph, and generally about this issue. Going first, I urge you to use, since I'm going first, I urge you to use your critical listening to both us and our opponents. I'll try answering some of their arguments, like by Brookline for everyone, where I'm going to call B for E, who for obvious reasons urge no action. I yesterday sent you the 2023 roll call, creating the committee with 58 people opposing any study. I think they're probably all pro-city. Some of the things they say are, MC, I'm going to say MCFG, offered a balanced evidence-based examination, and that we believe the report is biased, and that we want the work redone. Starting with the last one, that's the last thing we want for it to be redone. The word augment is not redone. As for balanced, we put in Article 31. Article 31 has the reports, beginning with a general report, and then by members Sandy Gadsby and David Mark Goldstein, whom I'm going to call the two townies. A fabulous but incomplete two and a half pages, expanding on Sandy's one in 2024, which had a single pro-town paragraph that's really a parenthetical addendum to it. It's Appendix B8, Page 3. And then there's one by four pro-city members, whom I'll call the City Four, two being B for E people who were appointed by a former city charter campaign treasurer. It's seven pages plus many pages of so-called research reports. They're all, many of them critiqued in our two explanations. And then as for the term evidence-based, some neutral reports do have evidence or data, but none supports anything by the City Four report. Their evidence is mostly talking to a few ad hoc, personally selected, and anonymous people, whom Chair Berry once called "research." Even worse, the city charter folk, I guarantee you, will promote that report as town-certified or authoritative or whatever. Will the voters know its many flaws? I'll talk about some of them later. As for bias, again, please skim our explanations, like Chair Berry's 2024 one on voter turnout. It's Page 6 and 7 in the combined reports, we discuss it. In a meeting, he emphasized it, and Vice Chair Donahue called it "not challengeable." In fact, Article 31 now buries it, not because we rebutted it, but because it was later refuted by a pro-city member, Catherine Henchey, in Article 31's paper entitled Municipal Elections, etc. The two townies mention that in their report. The Two Townies mention that in their report, but it's ignored by the City Four. The bottom line is turnout is not affected by town government. So there's more in our explanations. I'm not going to cover much of it. My two favorites are Chairman Berry's saying, is town meeting a culprit? And then Lisa Schatz talking to two, to Newton City councilors and saying one of them did a poll of Brookline folk. I'd like to see it, but I'm not sure I believe it yet. So two roads diverge in your tonight forest. Do you just take our opponents' word for it, or even ours? Or again, can you spend five or 10 minutes skimming our explanations? After six months and thousands of words, not a single specific criticism of ours has been addressed by any committee member. Maybe someone will try tonight. I'm now anonymous. But I'm eager to hear it. In court, there's a rule of evidence called adoptive admissions. If you're silent in the face of an accusation, it's considered to be you adopted it. So I'm waiting to hear what they say tonight. Yes, we offer too much information because we have no delusions that our mere credibility will either prove the specific flaws or our accusations of bias. But as John Adams famously said, facts are stubborn things, and so we rely on the facts. Don Van Gogh, to my right, has graded MCFG an A+ in February after only three so-called expert guests, who were all pro-city, had appeared, and with a fourth Rebecca Stone imminent. He was grading appendices, our appendices, 1 through 8, B1 through 8. And we put them in there for you to implement even more distrustingly than Ronald Reagan, distrust and verify those reports. John loves to quote Yogi Berra's, "You can observe a lot by just watching." And I would say also by skimming those reports. Those state, those six pro-city reports in there, in my view, flunk a straight face test. For Moderator Karen, I'm not going to get into Article 30's biggest issue, how drastic would be a city? But nobody knows that better than almost all of you, each being what we call in wherewith clause number one, a poster child for town government. Now, the ballot process. The City Four say an elected charter commission is the proper place to undertake a study. Well, John McGollis addressed that today in a wonderful email, and I want to add a few things. How will voters really know about the commission candidates? Or about all the complex facts? Do you really want drastic change to be decided by gut feelings and soundbites, like we're too big for a town? The ballot law gives voters pro and con arguments of only 150 words. B for E knows that developers' pro-city cash will gush into Brookline, and ballot-question campaigns lack contribution limits. Welcome to Brookline Citizens United, step one. Some mostly ignored issues by the committee that need augmenting. First, except for a speck by the Two Townies, mostly ignored was half of our form of government, the executive branch. The Cities, City Four reports entitled their report, "Case for Replacing Town Meeting." I don't know how they construed the mandate as only about town meeting.
Mr. Rosenthal, I just want to point out that you have slightly under four minutes left for the proponents' presentation, and I had understood that you might have at least one other speaker, so I just wanted to.
Yeah, I'll take one more minute, and, and thank you. So other issues that they, that were red herrings, they say our government's confusing a dizzying array. Where do they get that evidence transparency? Our Select Board meets in open meetings. Mayors meet behind closed doors. Accountability, mayors are never unelected, and concentrated power and campaign funds. The Two Pro-Town Members only address town meeting races. They omit mayors, concentrated powers versus our checks and balances. So we think this has to be augmented. More can be better, and is indeed needed. We say MCFG did not do its job. Please do yours. Thank you. Jocelyn Murphy is next.
Good evening. Jocelyn Murphy, Precinct 16, speaking in light of my experience as a former Assistant Attorney General, former legal advisor and interim chief of police in the city of Chelsea, member of Brookline's legal department where I worked for over 25 years as an associate town council and town council. I begin by thanking the members of the Moderator's Committee for their willingness to volunteer their time and expertise on behalf of the town. However, I believe the committee's work is unfinished and should be completed for the following reasons. Supported by favorable recommendations from CTO and S, the Select Board, Advisory Committee, and a resounding town meeting vote, this body empowered a committee to examine the various forms of municipal government in Massachusetts, to objectively evaluate the positive and negative aspects of such forms, including the fiscal impacts, and to report the committee's findings to town meeting and publish the report to Brookline's residents. Despite its explicit charge to evaluate these forms of government and report findings to this body and the residents of Brookline, the committee produced instead a collection of individual reports reflecting the opinions of individual committee members. There has been no objective evaluation by the committee, nor has the committee made or reported any findings. Instead, the chair explained that the committee offered no summary of its research as it is not easily synthesized into a set of short soundbites. This was the core component of the committee's charge because the role of the committee and the value of its anticipated report was to inform Brookline's electorate. In the committee chair's own words, "The committee's work is, quote, 'restricted to procedural and methodological issues providing context for the empirical work contained in nine reports.'" Despite being a practicing lawyer for more than 35 years, I had to read that sentence more than once to understand its meaning in the context of the committee's charge. How can Brookline's voters, even those who seek to be fully informed before they cast their votes, easily synthesize the information contained in nine separate reports if the committee itself could not? Several town meeting members have responded that the future charter commission will take up the charge and fill in the gaps. My guess is that they have not read the enabling legislation for charter commissions. Under Chapter 43B, Section 9, a charter commission has a maximum of 18 months to prepare a proposed charter. Within 16 months of its election, the charter commission is required to prepare a preliminary report, including the text of the charter and any, quote, "explanatory information the commission deems desirable." Within 18 months of its election, the charter commission must submit its final report, including the text and an explanation of the proposed charter, along with, quote, "such comments as the commission deems desirable." Those are the words in the statute. There could be no doubt that the charter commission, the charter legislation tips the scale in favor of the majority. Moving on, because I have three seconds, in defense of the committee, the chair lamented a few things.
I, I believe you sort of have to move, Ms. Murphy.
I do. We, Brookline voters should have a choice, but their choice should be informed by an accessible, unbiased analysis that outlines the benefits and drawbacks of the forms of government that are available to cities and towns in Massachusetts as directed by this body. If you agree that Brookline's voters are entitled to such an analysis, please vote in favor of referral. Thank you.
Before we hear from the opponents, I just want to engage in a slight bit of procedural wonkery since the picture has changed procedurally slightly. As Mr. Rosenthal has accepted the amendment of the Advisory Committee, Mr. Rosenthal's mode, the motion of the Advisory Committee becomes the main motion. And what I think I forgot to tell people is that can be found on Supplement 4, pages four through five. That is a, the orange supplement, if you get them in the old school construction paper version. But that's where the main motion that is before town meeting can be found. Give me one second to reset the timer. And with that, Mr. Gadsby, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's Sandy Gadsby. I'm a long-term and very proud resident of Precinct 5. I was your town moderator for 27 years until 2001. And for better or thank you. And for better or for worse, a member of the Moderator's Committee. My purpose before you this evening is simply to go summarize the accomplishments and the failures indeed of the Moderator's Committee in the hopes that it will assist you in evaluating and voting on the motions that are before you. The Moderator's Committee was a, consisted of two political science professors, one former university department head, a Harvard Law School professor who is an acknowledged national authority on voting and elections, five town meeting members or former town meeting members, two former moderators, one of whom was ex-officio, and some of the smartest men and women I've ever had the pleasure of working with. The committee was destined not to be able to provide you with a unanimous committee recommendation at the end of its process. It's principally owing to the strong biases in favor of a city or town of the members who were appointed. So that there was no possibility that the committee was going to recommend one or the other. What it did do, well, it suffered also from a real lack of support from the town, other than administrative support by Lisa McGilvery, who was very helpful. What it did do was produce 105-plus pages of reports, which are included in Article 31 of the combined reports. A number of interim reports and a couple of final reports. The interim reports are certainly exposed and subject to criticisms as biased in favor, many of them is biased in favor of the city form of government. The final reports, importantly, are three of them. One is a fairly reasonable case for change, changing our form of government to a city. There is a report on, to support the status quo of our current form of government, which I authored. And finally, a report by the law school professor that I'll get to in a moment. The point is that these reports, voluminous as they are, are all more or less useful in the debate that will succeed this town meeting and presumably terminate with a possible election on, including a charter commission. I want to address the referral motions before you. I will not address the Bernbaum motion, which seems to me silly. But all right, Mr. Bernbaum.
All right, all right. Hang on, Mr. Gadsby. I know you know better.
Yes.
Mr. Bernbaum, the fact that someone criticized your motion is not a point of personal privilege. However, I will direct, and I do not believe Mr. Gadsby was, I will not tolerate any attacks directed towards a person or an individual as opposed to their position or their actions. However, Mr. Bernbaum, I think the criticism was just of your motion, and that's fair game. Mr. Gadsby.
That's certainly my intention. The problems with the, an additional study committee, whether it's the Youth Council or the committee appointed by the Select Board, is first and foremost the timeframe. I know something about, as a moderator, appointing moderators committees, how difficult it is to appoint and mobilize a committee to act, to take any reasonable action over the summer. That just doesn't happen. So in effect, this committee is going to have six months to to expand the work of the Moderator's Committee, which is not very much. Secondly, I wonder who in the world would be willing to serve on it, given the constant stream of criticism to which the existing Moderator's Committee has been subject. And so I, and basically, I don't think that, that, that any such committee can provide you with any substantial additional information that will be helpful in your deliberations about a charter commission. Rather than spending its time on appointing and monitoring a Select Board committee, I would suggest that the Select Board read Professor Lessig's extremely interesting report on citizen engagement, which can be implemented and used as a means of, of spreading education on the whole process before us. So I urge no action on the main motion or the substitute motion, Mr.
Neil Shensky, at-large town meeting member. As moderator, I don't normally speak for or against any warrant article or vote, but I thought it would be important for town meeting to hear from me on this topic as I've been subject to some criticism. When the warrant was published, this article was a resolution calling for the extension of a deadline for the Moderator's Committee to deliver its report. Prior to and after the article was filed, I told the lead petitioner that if the committee wanted to extend its deadline, I'd be more than happy to do so. Now, the committee has delivered its report and dissolved. So this article, which was unnecessary to begin with, has morphed into a request to form a committee to evaluate and augment the already-delivered report. Despite what you've heard, in other words, it means, let's do it over. I think we have a little bit of scope creep here. I must compliment my predecessor, who appointed a mix of folks ranging from those long involved in town meeting to academics, to a practitioner who's experienced various forms of government. I added two newer town meeting members, who were also from academic backgrounds. Mixed into the torrent of criticism I've heard about my appointments, and you've also heard a little of this tonight, is that the newer participants are involved with the group, Brookline for Everyone. Oh my gosh, such temerity. Here's the thing about moderators committees in general, and this one in particular. When you appoint smart, independent people with various viewpoints and perspectives, they may analyze questions in a way you didn't expect and come to conclusions you may disagree with, or may even not want to hear. I think that's what's going on here. In this case, we have a distinguished volunteer group who was presented with a charge. They interpreted that charge, and in my view, produced a report which met the charge as best they could under the circumstances. You may disagree with any aspect of what these volunteers did, but they approached their task in good faith, worked hard, and they should be met with a loud and gracious thank you and applause.
Thank you.
And if you want more work to be done on this topic, it should be done with a committee or a commission that has statutory authority and access to resources. That's what may be on the ballot next year. We don't need another volunteer committee with no resources as is being proposed. as is being proposed. And just think, a new volunteer committee may even produce a report as succinct and understandable as the published explanation for the original warrant article and the current Rosenthal, or now Advisory Committee, motion. So, in conclusion, I say, vote no. Don't vote no once. Don't vote no twice. Vote no three times, but I think we're only going to have two opportunities to vote no. So, just say, no, no, and I'll say it again, no, and let's go home.
Are there any other speakers for the initial opponents block? There are not. Okay. If I can get the technology working, we should be able to proceed straight a ways. Ah, okay. I need to, I need to move it to the next time block, the one that, he's not looking at my notes, or like, appearance of impropriety. It still exists in Brookline, if not other places. Three minutes. All right. Thank you. At this time, we'll hear from Ms. Hardbeck on behalf of the Advisory It's been by assumption that three minutes is sufficient. Yes?
Yes, it should be. I've edited them down quite a bit.
Thank you.
All right. Hi, everyone. Kelly Hardbeck, Town Meeting Member from Precinct Seven and Member of the Advisory Committee, speaking for the Advisory Committee tonight. We are recommending favorable action on the amended version of the motion to refer the subject matter of warrant article 30 by a vote of 12 to 4 to nothing. While the petitioner would have you believe warrant article 30 is about democracy and the future form of government in Brookline, it is not. This is a procedural article that asks Town Meeting to direct the Select Board to appoint a committee now just to augment the work of the dissolved moderators committee in the forms of government, and do that work by March 1st of next year. During its meeting where the AC was taking up this motion, we had a robust discussion about many things, including whether the new committee could produce meaningful additions to the moderators committee work, the overall efficacy of this new committee, how the composition of any committee shapes its work product. Notably, our discussion was not about the ideal form of government for Brookline. Making a major change to our form of government requires a public process and a charter commission. The largest concern about this referral motion centered around the fact that the new committee would be reviewing and evaluating the work of a previous committee. That is no longer on the table. However, the Advisory Committee concluded that the warrant article still sets a dangerous precedent and potentially could have a chilling effect on volunteer service for committees. As such, the Advisory Committee amended the petitioner's motion by removing "review, evaluate, and" from that second bullet while leaving the word "augment," thus reflecting our concerns about the appropriateness of having one committee critique the work of another. The Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on the amended motion by a vote of 12 to 4 to 0. The Advisory Committee also considered the Beerenbaum referral motion the other night unanimously voted to recommend no action on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hardback. I would note that you left 45 seconds on the clock, for which I'm sure everyone thanks you. Next, we'll hear from Mr. Warren on behalf of the Select Board.
Yes? Paul Warren, speaking for the Select Board. First, before I begin, I too want to thank the committee, the moderators committee, for their work. Committee work can be a very thankless job, especially when you're dogged by critics. So, thank you. I also want to note that the speakers before me, I think I was adding it up collectively, it's more than 110, perhaps 120 years of municipal service in Brookline to Town Meeting, including Jocelyn, working for the town. So, thank you for your service. There's a lot of wisdom there. Much of the arguments for and against have been covered. The Select Board is recommending no action on each of the motions. Rehashing the work of the moderators committee, which held 16 public meetings, two hearings, and produced nine reports, doesn't advance clarity. In fact, it risks doing more harm than good. Appointing another committee undermines the very premise of volunteer leadership. When we start calling for new committees to critique or redo or augment the last committee because we don't like the tone or the conclusions, we erode trust in our process and in each other. Do we really believe that a select board-appointed committee or another committee will be more neutral or better received? Or are we just hoping for different answers from different participants? That's not research. It's retrial. And it sends a chilling message to every volunteer who gives their time to serve on a committee. If your work is unpopular, we'll just start over, extend it or augment it. We will step up. Who will step up next time, knowing their efforts may be second-guessed and rewritten? This is not how we strengthen our governance. It's how we fracture it. The original moderators committee was far from perfect. Few committees are perfect. But the solution is not to spend another eight months relitigating its findings. The solution is the charter change process prescribed by mass general law. The process is rooted in the will of the voters, first by asking their approval to appoint a charter commission, and then by asking them to agree or disagree with the charter commission's recommendations. What Brookline needs is leadership, not infinite process. We need to look ahead, not backwards. A majority of the Select Board, by a vote of 3 to 1 to 1, recommends no action on each of the referral motions. Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Mr. Beerenbaum. And before he begins, I just want, so everyone can follow along, his referral motion is found on Supplement 5, Page 1, which is a blue construction piece of paper, which unfortunately is the same color as Mr. Rosenthal's motion originally was. So, you have to actually look at the numbers. Mr. Beerenbaum's referral motion is found on Supplement 5, Page 1. So, with that, Mr. Beerenbaum, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Assistant Moderator. I am Lee Beerenbaum, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Nine. Why am I doing this to you right now? Simply, the text of this resolution is not befitting this body of mild-to-moderate augustness. Whatever the merits or not of the petitioner's argument, this warrant article has become an outlet for the arring of grievances that do not belong, as part of a serious debate that this body purports to engage in. For those who did not read the entirety of this cause for a question of privilege masquerading as a manifesto, here are just some of the rooticides and attacks on members of the committee and their work that occur within the resolution, amendments, and explanations. Note that this list does not include the opinions the petitioner appears to be trying to launder as facts in the approval of the articles whereas clauses. These documents repeatedly use ironic quotes around the words "expert," "research," and the entire concept of political science.
Mr. Beerenbaum, I ask you if you could direct your comments to why you are proposing that referral to the youth council is an appropriate place for this motion. I seem to recall you're asking for a question of privilege when you felt that your actions were being insulted. So, could we, you have a minute and 48 seconds left, and I think Town Meeting would like to know why you think the youth council is the appropriate place for this to be referred to.
I think that this is extremely relevant to why I am referring to the youth council. And also, I believe you just established that commenting on what people's actions are is totally within bounds. Everything about this is commenting on the literal text inside the warrant article that we were presented with. The documents also state that the-
It may be permissible, Mr. Beerenbaum, it may be permissible to criticize folks' actions, but you've been granted three minutes to explain why you believe that this motion, that this subject matter should be referred to the youth council. And I'm going to ask you, if you could get to the point. You have 1 minute and 20 seconds.
I have trimmed my comments to three minutes after multiple times requesting additional time.
Mr. Beerenbaum, you have a minute and 20 seconds to tell us. What is your point of personal privilege?
Khan?
Okay, first off, tell us who you are.
Thank you. Shawna Guilloragorfine, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 11. Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. I appreciate what you're trying to do. However, in all of my years at Town Meeting, when people get up to make their prepared remarks, and they have comments to make, and they have a series, this is clearly not prepared, but there's a way to build to a point. My colleague has three minutes to make his point. He has planned how to make that point in three minutes, and I don't believe it is appropriate for any of us to criticize him. In the middle of that, to say, you're not talking about the youth council, when he hasn't gotten to his final point yet.
The moderator always has the, first of all, that's not a point of personal privilege. It is technically a point of order, and it is denied. Now, I will explain why it is denied. The moderator always has the authority to regulate debates so that proceeds in an orderly, polite fashion that addresses the issues. And that is, I believe, what I've done. If you disagree, well, okay. I will tell you what. Bob, I will give you two minutes, so I'm increasing your time back up to a total of two minutes. But I would ask you, if you could, to try to direct yourself to the issue of why you have asked us, you've asked Town Meeting to refer it to, but I will give you two minutes. You decide how you want.
I do promise the final minute is on that. Thank you. These documents also state that opinions in opposition to the petitioners about the structure of municipal government are dangerous, calls the work of Professor Berry shallow puff pieces, and asserts that all of his writings are biased, and calls Professor Berry myopic, inexperienced and misguided, not his work or his actions, or his himself. And it appears to mock and dismiss claims by the committee that the petitioner is harassing them. This warrant article and the referral represent nothing, the time here says does not reflect the full two minutes that you just gave me.
I know. I'm keeping track of it. What will happen is it will go into negative numbers. You will get an extra minute. To the extent that I was uncivil towards you, I apologize, Mr. Beerenbaum. You have two minutes.
Thank you. This warrant article and referral will present nothing other than an attempt to forum-shop a second bite of the apple. The original 2023 article called for a moderators committee, and the Advisory Committee cited the flexibility that it provided as a benefit in its support. Now that it has put out materials undesirable, the petitioner asks for another try. Further, throughout this rant, the petitioner refers to pro-city and anti-city members of the committee, distinctions solely of his own making. So, why I'm happy to consider the work of the committee done and suggest people vote no action on the main motion? If we are to refer this article, I suggest we instead refer to the Borneo Brookline Youth Council. Let them review this flawed warrant article, and they can choose to bring it back to a future Town Meeting if they feel it would be a good use of their and our time. Why the youth council? One, our current charter conversation came from work by students just like these, and it would be fitting to put it back in their hands. Two, no one will live longer with the implications of our charter choices than these folks. It is hard to conceive of a group with a bigger stake in the outcomes of these decisions than them. And three, we will all benefit from their experience growing up in a world where claims of harassment are treated as serious concerns rather than celebrated as locker room talk. Should they choose to bring this proposal back to Town Meeting, I have no doubt it will be far more mature and respectful than what we were presented with tonight. Thank you.
I heard someone say, call the question, and I do want to apologize for Mr. Beerenbaum. I should have let him simply continue, and I am sorry. That is not the standard that I should have had at the chair, and I'll do my best that it does not happen again. Everyone deserves to be treated with respect, and to his credit, Mr. Beerenbaum did get to the point of the referral. So, my apologies to Town Meeting and to Mr. Beerenbaum in particular. So, that having been said, I heard somebody say, call the question. Is there a motion? All right. Moved by Mr. Libowitz, seconded by, I know my glasses on. I'm sorry, you're the newbie. You see, if you'd been there a while, I would have, like, recognized you immediately. We do have a motion to call the question, which I will read the list of people who have signed up to speak. Is there?
I just would like to ask a question about the youth council.
Okay, well, okay, here's the problem. I can't, at this point, because there's a motion that's been made and seconded, to call the question. I have to decide whether I'm going to allow that. And I think, at this point, the decision of whether to call the question should be left to Town Meeting. So, I'm going to allow a motion to call the question. However, I am now going to read the extensive list of speakers, and Ms. Khan is at the microphone and would like the opportunity to ask a question regarding the youth council. But since little slow on the uptake, I have to, I'm going to let the folks vote.
It did happen quite suddenly, and it was unexpected that you were not going to allow any questions from the body, so.
I will exercise my discretion to allow your question, and then I will entertain the motion to call the question.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
As long as it's a question and fairly-
Yes, Janice Khan, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 15. I would just like to know whether the Select Board has, in fact, populated the youth council.
We have a question to the Select Board. Have they populated the youth council?
Hi, Ches Carey, Town Administrator. Not yet, but it is actually in progress. We are, I don't know if this is on. Okay. The answer is not yet, but it is in progress. We've asked individual precincts and Town Meeting to submit volunteers. We're putting that together. We'll have a slate in front of the Select Board shortly, and we'll move forward there. So, it's in progress.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. I assume, Mr. Libowitz, you're still making your motion. Mr. Rubenstein, I assume you're still seconding the motion to call the question. All right. Let me read you the list. There are a number of people who've signed up to speak, and so I just want to let you know who's up there. But I will certainly allow a vote on the motion to call the question. So, speakers who are signed up to speak in favor of the motion are Mr. Gordon, Ms. Childs, who was on the moderators committee on forms of government, Mr. O'Neill, Ms. Heller, Mr. Levy, who is also on the moderators committee on form of government. I believe he may have had to leave before it was able to finish, but he served on that. Mr. Pearlman, who some of you may have heard of, speaking, I believe, now in favor of the main motion. They were signed up to speak in favor of the Advisory Committee Amendment, are Mr. Ross and Mr. Bono. And then, signed up to speak against the motion are Ms. Stone, Ms. Hanchin, who served on the moderators committee on form of government, Ms. Schatz, who also served on the moderators committee on form of governments, Ms. Gladstone, and Mr. Klein. So, that, or if you signed up to speak and I missed you, let me know. But I think I got everybody. There is nobody I'm seeing at the microphones. So, we will take a motion to call the question, requires a two-thirds vote of Town Meeting. So, you may drop that Okay. 147, yes. 54, no. 8 abstained. Eight abstentions. And that's not my strong suit, Mr. Kaufman, but that did pass, didn't it? Okay. So the question has now been called. The main motion is found on supplement one, page one. No, excuse me. I gave you the wrong information. The main motion is found on supplement four, pages four and five, because it's been accepted by the petitioner. It is moved by Mr. Rosenthal, seconded by Ms. Murphy.
Mr. Moderator.
Point, is there a point of order?
Yes. What is, are you asking the body to vote on? The referral first?
We, we were getting to that. Look, I don't blame him. I'm sure some of you have taught your children to drive, and it's like, you sure you see the stop sign there? Absolutely right. If you know how stressful it is to work out here without a net, I mean, sheesh. I already had one, me throw one nutty today. So what we will be voting on first, because we have made it to the semifinals, is Mr. Bernbaum's referral motion. It is going head-to-head with the main motion, which is the Advisory Committee motion, that I wanted you to know what the main motion was and where it was. We will now be voting first as to whether to adopt the substitute motion to replace the Advisory Committee Amendment, which is now the main motion, with the Bernbaum referral motion, which is found on supplement five, page one. So semifinals are the A C amendment, which is now the Rosenthal motion, because he's decided to play with that team. So that winner in the semis is now playing the Bernbaum amendment. So we're now going to vote on to whether to make the Bernbaum amendment referral to the youth council the main motion. I hope folks aren't too confused. A yes vote will adopt Mr. Bernbaum's motion to refer to the youth council as the main motion. A no vote will keep the motion as amended by the Advisory Committee to refer to the Select Board as the main motion. Requires a simple majority vote, and Mr. Ruschinsky is not telling me through a point of order that I've, that I've left anything out, so I think we can drop the vote.
Twenty-nine, one seventy-three, nine.
So that's twenty-nine, yes? Okay. So the vote was twenty-nine, yes, a hundred and seventy-three, no, and nine abstentions. So the Bernbaum amendment is rejected. They do not advance, it does not advance to the final round. And so now we have the final vote, not of the evening, but on this article, which is an up or down vote as to whether or not to accept the main motion, which is found on supplement four, pages four through five, which would refer the subject matter of warrant article thirty to a committee appointed by the Select Board to be charged with three things: review and consider the intent of November twenty-twenty-third special Town Meeting's warrant article eighteen, augment the work of the resulting, and now on April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, dissolve moderators committee. This isn't word for word, I'm paraphrasing because we all would like to get on with it and prepare a report whenever they get around to it, but hopefully as soon as possible. So that's a paraphrase, but you can see where it is. A yes vote does all that. A no vote says, you're not going to do that. It requires a simple majority vote, and I think we're ready to drop the final vote on this warrant article. Okay. The, the vote was fifty, yes, one fifty-two, no, and nine abstentions. The motion fails and is defeated. Now, I, I have the pleasure of and honor of presiding over the, my favorite vote of Town Meeting, but it looked like you might have a question or comment unless you're going to make the motion that allows the, my favorite vote of Town Meeting.
I, I believe I'm going to make that motion, and just if the clerk could please tell me if I'm doing something really wrong or logistically difficult or not possible.
I'll, I'll take.
I'm Isaac Silberberg. Thank you. I'm Isaac Silberberg, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven. I would like to motion to adjourn Town Meeting and dissolve Town Meeting, but delay the dissolve, the dissolution of Town Meeting until an appropriate time.
Okay. You're, you're close, and I will tell you what the, what the wording should be, but before we do, Mr. Kaufman would like to have two minutes to address Town Meeting, which he absolutely will have.
Thank you, Mr. Assistant Moderator, and thank you to Town Meeting. I asked the Assistant Moderator if I could be allowed two minutes. I believe it's important at the end of every Town Meeting for us to thank the staff that make this Town Meeting happen. It's really an effort that happens throughout the entire town. From the sixth floor of Town Hall, where we have council staff and staff in the Town Administrator's Office who shepherd these articles through, down to the mailroom in the basement, where they're mailing out these combined reports and printing up the supplements, staff in the hallway who are handing out tablets to the I T staff on the stage who make it happen, big, both in the booth as well as back in their studios, who make sure that these meetings are accessible, not only to Town Meeting members who are at home, but also to everybody from Brookline and throughout the Commonwealth who might be interested in the work that we're doing here, and the custodial staff who come in early in the morning and stay after we all leave. They all deserve a tremendous amount of thanks, so please join me in thanking them.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Now, the motion that we need is to dissolve this Town Meeting effective as of five P M. June sixth tomorrow, which will then allow you, if the vote as initially recorded by the Town Clerk turns out to be an error, you have until then to send him an email going, yeah, you got that wrong. So, so moved. All right. Okay, we can drop the vote to dissolve the Town Meeting. Hang on, people. I have to say this, as Donald Sutherland said in, in Animal House, it's my job. The final vote. One ninety-nine, yes. One, no. Somebody wants to stay here, and we know it's not Harry Friedman, and one abstention. Thank you. We are dissolved until five, at five o'clock tomorrow.